We're going to go ahead and call this City of Gallatin City Council Meeting, June 17th, 2025, to order. If you don't mind, Councilman Alexander, will you do the invocation? And Councilman Javance will do the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the sunshine and we thank you for the rain. And we know that you give us what we need, and we thank you for that. We just ask tonight, Lord, you would be with us in this place, that you would give us wisdom and understanding and be with our community and those that are going through struggling times right now. Lord, would you just comfort them and let them know that you care about their needs as well, Father? We commit all these things to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hayes. Vice Mayor Hayes. Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Carter. Councilman Van.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
And Councilman Javance. Vice Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we need approval of the city council minutes for June 3rd, 2025. I have a motion by Councilman Van, second. Councilman Jones, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, we will have public recognition on agenda-related items. Please come up and give your name and address for the record if anybody wants to come up and speak. And we do have a public hearing tonight on one item, so if y'all want to wait till that time, you can on that item. That's the first item on the agenda.
I think I am speaking to number one right now. The way it's written, I don't even know. I'm getting so confused of what's going on around here. But usually I have something that I just want to orate on, and I'm going to try to speak from the heart tonight, but you may get five minutes of stuttering, so I don't know how this is going to go. I just want to say, I don't think we need more homes at this time. Zillow, Redfin, Realtor.com show over 1,000 homes for sale in Gallatin, and that's not even including the apartments and things that are being built at this time over there on, I guess it's Nashville Pike and Long Hollow and Greenlee, I think. Mr. Hayes, we talked about three weeks ago, and you told me that you want to see your hometown of six years grow and thrive, and I don't think anybody that's come up here to speak is against that proposition. I just asked you at the time, why the warp speed of the development, why the, how fast we're going and why we're digging up the whole city at one time? And you told me, you said, "Why wait?" I think there's a lot of reasons to wait. People need to recover. Nature needs to recover. We're tearing down the trees and the homes for birds. Every time we dig up the earth, we're killing larvae, cicadas that are food for the, for those animals. And 70% of the pollinating bees live in the ground, not in honeycombs. We've dug up the water spaces, which is breeding ground for a lot of these animals. And then, the other reason to wait is, we need to find out where the water is actually draining to. I've had friends, they can't be here because they work evenings, that say that, for example, since the, I guess it's Liberty High School went in, they're noticing a lot more water over on their property and the roads over there. The other reason to wait is the traffic volume because of road construction, and the heavy trucks and everything seem to be breaking down the roads. There's a place on Lot 4 where it's kind of like this, from the, when it gets hot, the heavy trucks sit there, and it melts the asphalt. And then, one that nobody seems to care about is the human peace of mind. There's plenty of reasons to slow down, and we're begging you to represent our interests. Most of the people that I've heard speak up here over the last, I don't know, couple of months are asking you to slow it down. We're not saying stop. We're saying a little bit of a reprieve. The density of homes, I saw on TV, Mayor Brown mentioned that the density of homes was so that we could create green space. But that's just for humans to feel better, because once you dig into the ground, the green space is gone, and we tend to pave it over with asphalt and tar and ride our bikes and walk our dogs, but it's not really green. It's just because green is in the word, it's not really a green thing to do. We've already disturbed the animal homes, and we dig up, smooth out, and tar over. Warp speed growth in the human body damages the human body. The research I did this week mentioned that when the body grows too fast, the heart thickens, and it's harder for it to beat. It only handles a certain amount of blood, so it's dangerous to the human body for that. And part of the heart of the city is just thickening over and losing hope, I think. So, I want to use four-letter words because I'm so frustrated, but the only one I'll use is, "Please stop. Please stop."
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on any agenda-related items? And remember, we've got the one on number one coming up in a little bit, so.
Vice Mayor Hayes, council members, we appreciate you letting us come and speak tonight. I also agree with the lady that got up and spoke. I think our town is moving too fast. The traffic is horrendous now, and it's getting worse.
I'm sorry, can we get your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Kathryn Day. I live on Nickel Circle, 1043. I've been there for 54 and a half years, and I've got a petition that all of you were supposed to have had. I carried it by, copied by the mayor's office this afternoon, and it's got, right now, it's got 81 names on it. There were supposed to be several more people to come tonight that were going to speak, and they wound up sick. I've gotten texts today that said they weren't going to be able to make it. But I think I speak for the circle. There is not a single house on Nickel Circle or Brewer Drive that wants a walkthrough, put through on Kirkpatrick's property into the circle. We've had a peaceful neighborhood for years and years, and we have all types of animals, and we would like to try to protect it. Right now, we have any number of people that are walking through our subdivision from nickel-lined homes that have been built over there, and some of them, we really don't care, but they don't clean up after their dogs, and it's just a bad situation. And we would like to try to keep the rest of it as peaceful as possible. And I know I have several members of the circle here tonight, and I hope some of them will come up and speak, because I'm not the only one that is against it. And if you all want to see this copy, I don't know whether you have a copy of it or not.
I got one here that Paige, or they sent me, so if y'all want to look at that.
And we went to all of the houses. And Sean, do you want a copy? I'd like to have it some back since that's the only one I have. But we appreciate if you would vote against a walking trail coming into Nickel Circle. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak under public recognition?
My name's Larry Pettigo, reside at 1034 Nickel Circle East. Forty-some years ago, looking for a place to buy a lot and build a home here in Gallatin. I found that property on the Nickel Circle. The lots are averaged for about two acres, somewhere around that, some more, some just a little less. And the thing that convinced me to buy on Nickel Circle was I walked that property for about an hour. I noticed one car the entire time, and it was leaving the neighborhood. Nickel Circle is an oasis in the chaos that's going on around us, and I absolutely see no need whatsoever for a development to connect with a walking trail. What does that do for anyone? All it does for the residents of Nickel Circle is have invasion of foot traffic. Right now, we're free. We know our neighbors. We see people. We stop and talk as they walk. From my house and around the circle and back is exactly a mile. It's a great place for us to walk in the neighborhood. We feel safe. We feel secure. We know each other. It's a great place to live, and I don't want to see that oasis invaded. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anybody else like to speak under public recognition?
Yes, I'm the other half of the Pettigo household. I'm Sue Pettigo, and I live at 1034 Nickel Circle. As Larry has said, we've been there 40 years, and people in that neighborhood walk. They walk around that, like you said, it's one mile from driveway to driveway at our house, and we don't see any need to be connected to what's being built behind us. Is there a reasoning as to why they thought that was feasible, needed? I'm sure that's part of the contracting thing. I just, I see no need for it, but then I don't always see in the big picture. But we would like to, if that, part of that big ordinance there could be noted, that we did not want to connect to Nickel Circle, because we don't know where you connect. There's only three lots out there, so it's not being built on, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? If not, public recognition is closed. We'll move on to Mayor's comments. She wanted me to bring up a few things. Tomorrow night, 6 o'clock to 8:00 p.m., we have the zoning ordinance public review kickoff meeting. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait till a public hearing? I'm sorry. You guys? One more.
I'm Paul Scholwars. I live at 1002 Nickel Circle. First house on the right, top of Nickel's Lane. We've lived there about 50 years, and a lot of changes happened. And right now, there's, I think, three houses being built up there, and the dump trucks come right by the house, come down. These are hill layers. When they dump whatever they got to dump, they come back down the hill with an engine brake on, pow, 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 pow. And a lot of people back in there already have, you know, they haul stuff for people, and they have trucks that don't seem like they have exhaust on them at all. I mean, it wakes me up in the morning, coming off the hill, pow, 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 the engine, just racket. And then, these 300 or 400 houses across the road from where I live, and people walk, their dogs, up through there, regular. Well, they come over in the yard and do what they got to do. They don't clean it up. And when I mow, it's in the tires, and I park in the garage, and it stinks. Normally, it would stink, but that's just something you have to put up with. And over the years, it's really changed. And also, up at the, at Nickel Circle, I couldn't believe they are building them houses up there, that they have dumped 20-foot of dirt down through there by them power lines about, they put a sewer in, I don't know, 15 years ago, 10 years ago. It's been a few years, but they just, out of my yard and the middle of the road, they took multi-hundreds of loads up there and dumped under them power lines almost on the Kirkpatrick property, and then they built houses on it. I wasn't one of the house there. The foundation has got to, to me, it's got to fail. It's got to, because there's nothing under it to hold it up. The land has just not been there long enough to take care of that, I don't think, and they didn't pack it or nothing. It's just been laying there. But anyway, every time, I know that things have got to progress. I know that. But it seems like it's just an explosion, that over the past little bit, that so much is happening, and things are changing, and I know they're going to. But it's something you just have to put up with. I mean, you can't, the noise, I'm the first house on the road when you turn off of Nickel's Lane, on the left side, on the right side, when you turn there, and there's a lot of noise there. From off the road, motorcycles coming by going 100 mile an hour, regular, regular. They come by going 100, easy. And, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
I just, I want to thank the folks from Nickel Circle for coming and just make sure they understand that tonight is a public hearing. We're not voting on anything. It will be July the 1st, I believe, will be the next full council meeting that we could vote on anything. But I just wanted to make sure they weren't expecting a vote or any action tonight, but I've heard what you've said. Thank you.
Hold on, let's get through the public hearing here real quick.
Are you going to make some more comments? Are you fresh with more comments?
No, I mean, we're on public recognition right now, so, yeah. So, let's get through that real quick. You want to go ahead and say something, or is it related to the public recognition?
I can speak after the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on public recognition? Okay, public recognition is closed. All right. Do you want to say something real quick?
Yes, sir. Just about that, if I remember, so that stay fresh in your head, and you can think about it before next week. The walking trail they're talking about got added at the planning meeting, with the comment was said at that time was that the people won't care if we add a walking trail. That was a comment, a paraphrase, but that's what got said. So, just to be fresh in your head, when you think about it this week, for next week, we have a petition for almost everybody in Nickel Circle who say they're against it. Now, just think about it this week before we bring it next week. So, they care. They care. Thank you.
That, I don't think it'll be next week. It'll be the two weeks, two weeks, so. Okay, moving on to Mayor's comments. She wanted to bring up a couple of things. First thing is the zoning ordinance public review kickoff meeting is tomorrow night in the council chambers here from 6:00 to 8:00, open to anyone, so council members in public. 6:19 the next day, which is Thursday, is Juneteenth. Most city offices are closed that day. Also, that day is the first third Thursday on the square with a band called Thunderstorm Artists, that's 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. The 20th, which is Friday, the Fifth Annual Juneteenth Community Festival, which is 536 Bly Avenue. One more thing, on the 21st is the, we have another, the Fifth Annual Juneteenth Community Festival, 536 Bly Avenue. So, we have two of those coming up. Is that right? Thanks. Okay. All right. And, huh? Uh-oh. Stephen, Stephen said he's going to be singing on the 21st, so. All right, and one more thing, like to thank the police for Saturday, you know, for the event, for preparing and assisting. Wonderful job, I heard. I wasn't here, but thank you, Chief Mandy, the Police Department. And that's all I have, so we will move on to the agenda, which is item number one, public hearing, ordinance number 02505-30. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, zoning 17.18 plus or minus acres not zoned to the R8 PRD Medium Density Residential Planned Residential District and to rezone 4.08 plus or minus acres from the R40 Low Density Residential District to R8 PRD Medium Density Residential Planned Residential Development District with a preliminary master development plan for Kirkpatrick, Gallatin, on 154.83 plus or minus acres located south of Nickel's Lane and west of Woods Ferry Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
Public hearing. Does anybody, would anybody like to speak on this? All right, if not, public hearing is closed. Item number two, second reading ordinance number 02505-33. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds for year-end account cleanup. Motion to approve.
Again.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Javance. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is first reading on ordinance number 02506-34. Councilman Van.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance awarding bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $20,340,000 from water sewer, 2025 bond sales, and TDEC ARPA, ARP, I guess, non-competitive grant for the new raw water intake project. Open for discussion.
Okay, is that a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Van, second by, is it discussed, or are you voting to?
Open for discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion, aye.
I just want to see if you have any comments on it.
Okay.
It's a little bit more than I'm used to.
All right. A motion for discussion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I make a motion forward.
Okay, now we have a motion to approve?
We're supposed to vote on a motion for discussion?
Okay, all right, we didn't, did we? All right. Motion to discuss. We have a motion.
Second.
We got a second. You did second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Javance, second by Councilman Van. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, first reading on the ordinance number 02506-35. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ordinance awarding bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $1,500,000 from water sewer reserves for the Lot 4 Road Sanitary Sewer System additions project. Motion to pass. Motion move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Jones. Is there a second? By Councilman Carter. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, first reading ordinance number 02506-36. Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance awarding bid and authorizing funds in the total amount of $310,000 from water sewer reserves for the Nashville Pike Flow Meter Relocation Project Contract 225. Motion to approve.
Again.
I have a motion by Councilman Carter, second by Councilman Javance. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, resolution number R2505-28. Councilman Javance.
Thank you, sir. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a software as a service agreement between the City of Gallatin and Tyler Technologies for the purpose of moving municipal justice software from an on-premise environment to a Tyler Technologies hosted cloud environment, and also move.
A motion and a second by Councilman Carter. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Javance.
I want to thank our IT director to get the amendment I talked about last, last time, to make sure that we're protected on a non-Tyler hosted cloud, so that's in, and I think we got the two, the amendment that legal on it, so, great job. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, resolution number R2506-30. Councilman Fennell.
This is a resolution to revise employee pay plans. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Carter. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Javance.
I still have the same problem that we talked last week with the EDA on that pay scale, because the city doesn't decide what the EDA get paid. It's decided by the board, so I make a motion to remove the EDA employees from the city pay scale, because we have no control on it, so there is no point of keeping it here.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, just to talk about it.
Second. Discussion on this?
Is that a motion for, was his motion to?
To remove the EDA from the pay scale.
So, was yours for his motion or to discuss?
Or his motion.
His motion, yeah.
If we have, if we have no control on that these employees pay, we should not have them on the pay scale of the city employees, because if we follow the pay scale for every other employees and we have it there, and I mean, they have to follow it, or we're going to open ourselves to probable problems, which people are going to look at the pay scale and say, "Why, I'm getting paid scale six when for the same grade, they just start and they scale 10?" scale 10. So I think that's how I see it.
Were we going to get some more information or anything on that? I mean, were we looking into anything else?
Well, I have talked with the HR director. It's not really a legal issue, but I was asked to look into it. So I've talked with the HR director and the finance director and they both, we all kind of agree that they should probably stay in, that they, they are required, they are city employees. And the pay scale at least gives some parameters to the board. Yes, the board has their own bylaws, but it does give some parameters. If you take them out, there are no parameters. And they were included in the pay study. And in my discussions, it felt like it was, you know, you don't have to keep them in there, but it does give that board some parameters of how they should be paid. And it's my understanding that they, they did follow the correct procedures under our personnel rules in getting pay outside of their grade, as do other employees.
And as I stated last week, I believe that, you know, back when we started the ED economic development vision, that that's one of the reasons we put them in there so they would have some parameters to look at. So.
But it's really for this board to, for this body to decide what you want to do with.
All right, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All right, the motion is to remove the EDA department. All those in favor?
There's already a second. We just didn't, yeah, we were ready to vote.
All those in favor of removing them?
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
Aye.
Your aye or no?
All those opposed? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Can we do a roll call real quick? I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Hayes.
No.
Councilman Alexander.
No.
Councilman Carter.
No.
Councilman Fan.
No.
Councilman Fennell.
No.
Councilman Jones.
No.
And Councilman Givance.
Yeah.
Six one. Okay, now back to the original motion. And this is to revise the employee play plan, pay plans. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion carries.
Item number eight, let's see, resolution number R2506-31, Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a resolution to revise the personnel classification system and update job descriptions. Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jones. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, resolution number R2506-32, Councilman Fan.
Thank you. Resolution limiting the City of Gallatin Personnel Rules and Regulations, Rule 4, Section 4-3, and I so move.
Have a motion, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Givance.
I have a question for the HR director. If you, that should be an easy one.
Yeah, come on up.
On the modification of the rule, say, allows departmentate to hire candidates up to step five with approval of the HR director or off-step with approval of the mayor. I was wondering what, what are the safeguard, but I read after, say, within parameters established during the annual budget planning process. So we're talking just about the money side? What are we talking about when we say parameters?
Yes, essentially the budget line, salaries and/or if in the future, there is determination by council to limit the potential increases to a certain percent. So it might be that it's budgeted a 3% maximum increase for that year, there's a 5% to those parameters that get established during that process.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our agenda. Now we're under other business. I have one thing here real quick is, I think I brought this up last week, but we need to approve or not approve is the Trans Am Car Show when they're coming in July. I believe it's July the 25th. This is Friday. It's a road closure from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. North Water Street from Prince to Main and the square.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by?
Councilman Carter.
Councilman Carter. Any discussion on this?
I'm all for it, but do we have, I think we have a process without for closure road. We have all the signature we need?
Yes.
If we have all that, no problem.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, anybody else have any other business up here? Councilman Carter?
So just wanted to remind everybody that last week, I was able to attend the 104th birthday celebration for Ms. Lucille Sneed at Gallatin Rehabilitation Center. Thank you, Ms. Ken Jimmy, for sending a representative from the HR department. We had a lot of fun. Ms. Lucille and her family were very thankful and grateful for the proclamation from the mayor's office in the City of Gallatin.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Anybody? Anybody? Department heads? Department heads. All right, this time we've got public recognition on non-agenda-related items. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Anybody? All right, public recognition is closed. We need another motion.
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.